Hey guys, can you both hear me and see my screen?
I can hear you. I can see your screen, but my video disappeared, which is, I mean, my screen with the videos, which is fine. I turned off my video, but the whole screen disappeared, so. Let me. Back up when I turned it back.
Yeah, when I share my screen like this, the only video you're gonna see on the side there is whoever's talking, if they have video.
Okay, great. I'm gonna turn my video back on, just not done getting dressed. I was just making sure I could log in, I'm still brushing my hair. And talk to you later.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Michelle.
Hi Gordon.
Hi. I'm sorry, I wasn't quick enough to catch the mistake today. The. We're going to cover, as we're going to meet on Monday, the 22nd. Not a big deal, I'm sure.
Morning.
Morning Alan.
Morning Alan.
How you feeling Gordy?
I'm fine, thank you.
Any made it?
Doctor says take it easy.
We'll try and take it easy on you.
I worry about you.
I know, you should be.
I know.
Never had a meeting this early, this early in the morning before.
I hope we don't.
Any meeting or just a city meeting?
They spread me out of the hospital about seven o'clock last night, so, just so I could be here.
Nice, but that was awful late, wow.
Well, wanted to make sure everything was okay before they let me go. The choice was just to stay and they could check me out today, but. Comfortable, well, the bed wasn't very comfortable, so.
Just to warn everybody, I'm not crying, my allergies are going berserk this morning.
Yeah baby. No, I redesigned my house, so it looks just like my office, just.
I asked him the same thing Alan.
The top ceiling is nice, man. A zoom background, they can just plug in there, you know.
No, there's a lot of functions that we still have to come in and take care of. You can't just do it in my home, like the mail and checks and stuff like, so, I've come in every day during shutdown. Some days I stay longer than others, but.
Yeah, we have a staff member that goes in once a week to get all the transcripts that come for me.
Yeah.
And then scans them, emails them to us.
And that's the other thing, is like the equipment, you know, I don't have a scanner at home. I mean, I do one page at a time, or a printer, I don't have a printer that could do, you know, a document if I need to proof or something like that, so, I try and batch all my stuff and have it here first thing in the morning, or something where I can be efficient, but, I've spent more and more time here at the office in the more recent days.
Try get more done, because it's quieter, because that's how I am. I love to go to my office when there's nobody there, and get a lot more done.
Yeah, that's true. It's just, even if you get dressed for work and you go into your dedicated space at home, it's still not work for me, and so, yeah.
Well, it's nine o'clock, do you want to get started?
Mayor, do you mind if I give my Zoom bomb disclaimer?
You go ahead.
All right, thank you. I know we've done several virtual meetings now, so I think we've got the hang of it, but I did want to reiterate the threat of Zoom bombing, and this is where a meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. There's been an increase in this in recent weeks, and so if this does occur during this morning's meeting, we'll disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link after a few minutes of pause, so, we'll also turn over that video to law enforcement if that were to happen, but we hope that we can conduct this meeting free of that sort of interruption, but we will temporarily in the meeting if it occurs. The agenda is once again being displayed on the screen, also, the commission packet and the agenda can be found online at adrianecity.com for anybody who might want to follow. So Mayor Heath, we'll turn this over to you.
All right. I call to order for May 22nd, 2020, special meeting of the Adrianian City Commission. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, may I have a roll call please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Health.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauze.
Present.
All commission members present.
Resolution R 20-086 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to accept the resignation of Nathan Byrd as city administrator. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution.
Support.
Robin, who are you putting down as the second on that?
Oh, Watson and Gauze said it at the same time.
That's a Gauze, he can have it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right, are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, just really brief. I would, I think Nathan, for his short tenure of service, it's unfortunate for us from the city standpoint, but it's very fortunate for him and his family and the advancement of his career. I wish him the best of luck, and I, in my gut, know that he is going to be a success in Livingston County.
I'll save my comments to the last meeting.
Say that again?
I'm gonna save my comments to Nathan's last official meeting, so, he knows how I feel though.
Yes, thank you. I echo those same sentiments of Commissioner Watson, and I've expressed them also to Nathan personally, but, you know, we will, we will all have probably many comments at your last meeting, Nathan, to wish you well on this new endeavor, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Health, with a second from Commissioner Gauze. Roll call please.
Commissioner Health.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous.
At this time, we're going to have a discussion of the city administrator vacancy. That can be, this is for commissioners only at this time, it's not a public comment right now, and it's going to just be a discussion based around, if we want to discuss interim right now, that is perfectly acceptable, but it's also going to be discussing our search process with Gov HR. First, I would like to start it out just by saying that, even though it's very unfortunate that we are saying goodbye to Nathan, after him not being here for even two years, it was fortunate for us, because we have a guarantee with Gov HR, who did our search, when we were searching and received Nathan as one of our candidates, and he ended up coming here as our city administrator. We do have a guarantee that they will do another recruitment search, since it has not been 24 months since, that 24 months have not lapsed yet, so, the only thing that we will be incurring for cost will be expenses, and that would obviously be with any search of bringing in candidates, you know, travel expenses, things like that. It would also be if we do need our representative Ryan Cotton to come in from Gov HR, would be his travel expenses and announcements only, but the rest of all the expenses, and this was a very extensive and very expensive national search that will be done basically at no cost to us, only with the exception of the expenses and the announcements only. So I just wanted to, you know, put that out there right now as we are talking about this, so, just when everybody, anybody wants to go.
I guess I'll go first. I think when we adopted the resolution to hire Gov HR, I think that was a substantial investment. You know, but I think the commission at the time was on the same page, and we wanted the best candidate we could possibly get. Flew a gentleman in from Washington, the state of Washington, I think we got mid 50s, we got application wise, which is pretty good for a city of our size, and like I said to some of you, you know, in private, that it's unfortunate that Nathan is leaving, because I do think we got a really good administrator to deal, but I think that this gives us the opportunity to use the same firm, update the brochure, a few tweets or kinks that the mayor referenced in her email she sent out, and I think this is the smart way to go. It's gonna take all the legwork for us, and they can pare down, they can vet the candidates, and then take that, and then just apply it and get it down to the top 10, and then go from there, the same process we used before, so. Sentence blueprint is already laid out, so I think it's pretty much just updating the brochure, some things have changed. I know the mayor said that the population and some other minor things, but I think I'm good with it, as long as the tweets are made with the current brochure and everything like that, but I think if the new commissioner and the mayor, who was not here when we searched the first time, I think if they wanted to add anything, I don't have a problem with that either, so I mean, so buddy, this is the smart way to go, and and I'm happy with Gov HR and the service they provided last time.
Commissioner Health, thank you for sharing your experience from last time. I was obviously not on the commission, but I did attend a couple of the interviews, so I thought it was done very well and professionally, and they brought us a great candidate in Nathan, so I expect that they're going to do their job again and bring us another wonderful candidate, so I agree, I think we should continue with Gov HR.
One thing that Ryan did tell me from Gov HR, I did want to express to all of you, is that this really sealed the deal maybe for me in my mind, is that he wants to personally have a conversation with every single commissioner, and myself included, just to find out what we are looking for, you know, get our thoughts, and I know that even now with Nathan announcing his resignation, he's been speaking with Nathan quite a bit about what is a good fit for here, what is not, in order to getting Nathan's opinion as well, but I know he does want to speak with each one of us individually, and I think that right there is a major plus with using Gov HR, because that is very important, and and I don't think everybody would be willing to necessarily maybe do that and reach out.
I would like to say that this is a real different situation than the last time that we were looking for a new administrator, and one thing that Nathan has done is brought a calm to City Hall. I feel that City Hall is pretty stable these days, and so when we look to fill this interim position, I want to fill that position with somebody from within City Hall, rather than bringing somebody in from the outside. That's a concern of mine. I personally have a one or two candidates in mind, but I don't think that we need to make that decision right now.
I agree, I think we should probably, you know, if you go talking interim wise, you know, like discuss it amongst ourselves, you know, individually, and then that route, see if the candidate's actually interested in the position, because again, it's a last time we did this, you know, Chief Emmerich, he was not a lame duck interim, he actually negotiated the contract, so, he was working, so, I think that's smart, Lad, to kind of discuss it right now, and then kind of just maybe talk amongst ourselves, and kind of come up with some kind of a consensus that way.
But I think, I think as we are right now, we do have time, but that time can slip away from us if we don't lay out some personal milestones, like hey, okay, but we're not going to discuss it today, but we are going to discuss it this day and make a decision by that day, or discuss possible candidates and have, whether it's the mayor or a commissioner goes and talks to them and sees if they have interest, or we tell staff, if you're interested in this interim, come see the mayor by, you know, next Friday, something like that, because we could, it would be really easy to to lose a lot of valuable time, not purposefully, totally on accident, and then all of a sudden, I'd be standing there like, aw, nuts. We had six or 60 days, and we focused all of our efforts on the search, and we never talked to the right, got the right interim in there, and to Lad's point, some of that calmness or efficiency of City Hall is lost because of our our dragging our feet, or just our oversight, oversight's probably the best, better answer.
Well, I think that you know, we should, we should talk amongst ourselves a little bit, and I think that when we come to a consensus, you know, I'd just like to approach whoever we agree on, make sure that they're on board with what we're thinking.
I would really like, if, this is one of the reasons I wanted to have this discussion today, is I would really like to have two commissioners and myself meet with anyone that is interested in the interim position, hopefully we're no longer in the Zoom situation, but if we are, I guess we could do it that way, but hopefully we can actually be face to face, and now that there, you can have 10 people, and you can be in those groups, I'm thinking we could do that, but I would like to have three of us, because we're not violating the Open Meetings Act by doing that, myself and, you know, two commissioners that would be willing to do that, and meet with anyone that is interested in that interim position.
I also want to hear from Nathan. Nathan, you know your staff well enough, if we're looking internally, I would like to have a conversation with you, or at least have that group of three people, as you suggest, Mayor, have that conversation with Nathan, and say, you know, who do you think could step in for a couple of months, a year, whatever the interim's going, however that long that's going to last, and yeah, you know the staff right now better probably than we do, at least better than I do, so, I would want to make sure that you're involved in this, and I agree, Brad, we, time slips so fast, we need to have some deadlines with this.
What kind of deadlines do we put on it then? Should we approach somebody in two weeks, or a week, or?
Well, I think once the mayor talks to us, whoever, you know, whoever the other couple commissioners are going to be, those three can maybe have set the deadline, so, the mayor would like to say, by next Wednesday, I'm going to contact all of you individually and see who's interested, and then figure out who's going to be on that little mini-commission, and then by next Friday, we're going to talk to Nathan and get an idea of who's, who he thinks is interested, and then by the following Friday, we'll have spoken with whoever the candidate is. I don't think it would take a whole lot to work this out, but.
I want to clarify for the record that, you know, the conversations that are, you know, actually, there's actual conversations, they're not actual, coming, we're not coming to a consensus outside of a public meeting, so I just want to make that clear for the record, that it'd just be, just.
Right.
Bringing ideas off each other, not coming to an actual decision outside of this format.
I want to give clarification too, that we're talking about finding someone for the interim, not a final candidate down the road.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could. Right now, we're looking for an interim with, internally, if that's going to be feasible.
Nathan, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as far as timeframes go, I'm gonna be here till July 17th, and if the commission were agreeable to this, it might be good to target the June 15th commission meeting as sort of a deadline to appoint. That would leave me about a month to work with that person. If it's one of our existing department heads, it's not going to be quite as vital that we have, you know, two, three months, but if we could have four weeks together where we could schedule it out some time, that, that might work out really well, and so if you wanted to make the 15th as a target date to adopt, and you could do it sooner, of course, if you were ready, but that might be a good schedule to work from.
And that's why I wanted to have this discussion, because I want them to be able to work with you before you leave, that, that is exactly why. Even though we don't have to make a decision right now, I knew that we needed to have this discussion to get it moving, because I want them to be able to. Because I want them to be able to train and work with you too.
So are we all in the consensus that, that we're going to go to Gov HR again? Is that, is that, is that the plan? Go through the same firm we used last time?
I would like.
But is that, don't we have to vote on that?
We, we will, but yeah.
We're talking right now. Okay. Okay.
Brad, did you have a comment?
Not other than, I mean, the, the process and the investment that we made when finding Nathan, I think was money well spent. You know, we got to know Ryan a bit from, from the time he was, he came to town. He did those interviews, that questionnaires, things like that of us, gave us chances to look over the brochure. I mean, he, we very much engaged us and used us because of our city. And so from that point, you know, I think the process was thorough and the outcome was great. So I have zero reservations and 100% support using Gov HR. And we're lucky that Ryan's coming, they're still with them and is coming back because I'm sure he still remembers us.
So are we good to move on to the resolution? Does anybody else want, and does any of the other commissioners have any comments? Okay. So Resolution R 20 dash 087 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to enter into an agreement from Gov HR and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Who to adopt the resolution?
The board.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call please.
Commissioner Robert.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Now we are going to have a discussion of match on main grant application. Nathan, I'm not sure if you're going to be the one discussing it or if you're having Greg or, or who it is, but go ahead.
I'll go ahead and get started and Greg and Chris may, may participate as well, but I'll give the general overview. And I want to thank the commission for adding this to the agenda. I know that this wasn't on the plans, but this grant just got announced late last week and it's a very short timeframe. So for us to apply, we have to have an application submitted by next Friday. So this was really our only opportunity to bring this to you today. And it's an interesting grant. It's the MEDC Match on Main program is being expanded through some additional partnerships they've made to provide support to small businesses located in traditional downtowns that have been impacted by COVID-19. And so as the local unit of government, we're eligible to apply for this grant because we're in the engaged status of the redevelopment ready certification program. So the city of Adrian is eligible to apply. It's a little bit of a different system than other grants. There is no match, so we wouldn't have to pay anything and businesses wouldn't have to pay anything. There's no financial obligation. But individual businesses would be required to fill out a worksheet, submit it to the city and then the city would be required to fill out an application and forward that on to the MEDC. And so we can have as few as five businesses or as many as 25 businesses in the application pool. And there are a couple eligibility requirements that they lay out. One is that, you know, it's a for, for profit business in a downtown district, at least 25 employees or fewer. They have to sell products face to face, products or services, I should say, face to face. They also are not eligible if they've received some sort of small business relief program or additional funding up to this point. But really a lot of businesses downtown would be eligible to participate in this. And depending on the number of, of people that want to participate, it could be as much as a couple thousand dollars, up to $10,000 a business. The eligible uses for the grant funding, and I'm going to read this from their program guide. Grants may be used by the business for working capital to support payroll expenses, rent, mortgage payment, utility expenses, COVID-19 relief or recovery expenses, or other similar expenses that occur in the ordinary course of business. So there's a lot of latitude to use this. And, you know, it may not be a lot of money, but we just had a conversation on Monday night about trying to find ways to help businesses in this difficult time. And this may be one way to do that. So it's, it's fast tracked. It's a very quick process to get this done. But we feel confident that we could administer this program over the next week and then get everything submitted by Friday. We also have to put some local criteria as part of the process that fits in with the state criteria. And Greg, I think you're with us. Do you want to sort of introduce that topic? And then we can have some discussion about what that might look like.
Yeah. You know, we struggled with this, whether we had to do it at all or not. Late yesterday, I did get to talk to Paula Holtz from MEDC. He seemed to be of the view that we didn't absolutely have to do it. But the, 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 the program is set up contemplating that because they anticipate that there will be more applicants than there are spots. I don't know if that'll be true for us or not. But it could be true. You can only have 25. You must have five. You can only have 25. So you have to be in that range somewhere. And it is the transparency of the local criteria that you choose is, is one of the evaluation criteria for the program as to whether or not they, they award the grants. And so I do think it's useful to have them. I, I came up with four. I thought of, you know, the same way as the state has established threshold criteria as opposed to scoring sorts of criteria. I thought it would be better, you know, my, in my ideal world, we'll put everybody who is interested on the application. And so the, the way it worked is there's an application from us. It could have been the DDA or, or the city. The DDA is not in a position to try to act on this, this quickly. So it has to be the city. The city applies and it attaches lists of the businesses within the city that are, for which it is applying. But I have proposed four criteria. I don't know if these are on a graphic anywhere that we can share.
They're, they're on the resolution, the very last whereas, those questions are there. And so if the commission has a resolution in front of them, you can see the criteria there.
There, there's nothing magic and you, and the commission can certainly feel free to change them. As I say, I tried to pick criteria that I thought all or the majority of the interested businesses would meet. So that, you know, MEDC can see we, we had some rules for it and, and we were looking, and we're applying these criteria. But same time, we'll probably get everybody in as applicants that are interested in being applicants. You know, I don't, I don't see us getting to 25, given the short timeframe available and, and most of it being over the holiday weekend. So, you know, I, I established a criteria of, or I'm suggesting you establish a criteria of a business having been in operation for at least two years. Reason for that is to try to choose businesses that are likely to succeed. And you're taking scarce resources and investing them in a business. You don't want one that's still sort of speculative. You want one that has at least a bit of a track record. Two, that business have employees. We talked, but, you know, and you could set a number. But I think just the idea that it's employing people and there's that economic multiplier to the, to the money that it's, that that business is sending is important. Business be a, a public facing business. This is sort of a requirement of the program anyway, but we get a little, let's say that it's open to the public on a regular basis. So not somebody's personal office that happens to be downtown, Rick's office. And finally, whether or not the business was delinquent on any accounts, fees or assessments with the city prior to the pandemic. We don't want to take money and give it to somebody who those are the only four criteria I came up with. You could come up with other criteria. You could amend those criteria. You could decide, I think, to go with not, although I, I think it's better to have some.
And Greg, just to, just to clarify, because I know this gets raised a lot, this question, this is not just downtown businesses. This is the entire city of Adrian, correct?
It is not. It is DDA businesses only. This Match on Main program was originally a Main Street program. And the expansion of it has been to allow more communities that are not Main Street select communities to participate, particularly communities that are either redevelopment ready certified or engaged in the redevelopment ready communities program. So we're engaged in that program and we're allowed therefore to participate. But it's only for downtown businesses, those defined by being in the DDA.
And do you feel confident that we have at least five businesses that would be able to meet the criteria and, and so that we could receive this?
I think there are five that would meet the criteria. Whether there are five who will ultimately fill out the application, I couldn't.
Okay.
I think it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to make sure we get five.
Another question I have is if, okay, because this, this occurs even in our downtown. What if, let's say Commissioner Watson owns two different, three different businesses downtown? Could he apply for each of his different businesses? If, if, as, as a separate, even though he's the same owner, because they are separate businesses?
I think if he's the, you know, and ownership can be amorphous in terms of, you know, legal entities that might be the owner. But if, I, I don't think any one entity could apply more than once.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to discuss, Nathan?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I was just going to, I was going to say that the, the paperwork that the businesses fill out is not very onerous. It's, I think it's a three-page questionnaire. And so even though we are working on a short timeframe and I agree with Greg, it may be difficult to get a lot of businesses signed up. It, it's not, it's not that difficult to fill out the questionnaire. And so this criteria that we've got in the resolution would be part of that three-page questionnaire. They would have to answer those questions in order to be eligible. And the other thing I meant to mention earlier, just to clarify in case there's any concerns, what we're proposing to do is to evenly distribute whatever funding is received to the businesses that submit. And so it wouldn't be a situation where the city is picking one business to get $7,000, one business to get $1,000. Whatever the MEDC provides funding wise, we would divide it by the number of businesses that have participated and just distributed out evenly. So there's no, there's no thought that, you know, the city is involved in that. That would, that's the way the resolution is written. So I just wanted to specify that in case there were concerns about that as well.
I have a question and Nathan, I think you probably would be best, or Greg, I'm not sure. So the title of this program is Match on Main. But in the resolution, it specifically says that there is no match from the city. So I just want to be sure there's no funding coming from the city or the DDA or anything for this program, correct?
Yeah, $0.
Okay. It's just called Match on Main because.
Yeah, Match on Main is actually a, a longer standing program that they've sort of altered a little bit in response to COVID-19. And so that, this is a program that's been around for a while and, but this new part of it for COVID-19 relief, of course, is new. Yeah, they couldn't have come up with a more confusing name if you're not have, need to have a match. But yeah, where there's, there's nothing that the city would be funding in relation to, or the businesses either that apply.
All right. I see that in the resolution, but I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, definitely.
Who do the business owners contact to take advantage of this and get the application?
We would, we would have, probably have them submit their application to the community development department. We would have it emailed to a staff member in that department who would chronologically track the applications. And then we would also make a phone number to the department available for anybody who had questions. We, our plan would be if this gets approved, to have this announced later today. So the people have a handful of days to work on it. But this is going to be run through the community development department and also myself and others in my office are going to be participating in that as well. One other thing I do want to mention is that were we to get more than 25 applications, our plan would be to take the first 25. Again, we're not trying to be subjective here. We're just trying to, to, to go in order. I don't think we'll get that many, but that is the limit. So it would be run through Greg and his department and his team. But myself and Michelle and my office are also going to be involved in this next week, helping to administer it.
Okay. So the application will be on the website later today.
Yeah, website. We'll do a press release, assuming it, it gets approved. We'll do a press release, put it on the website, we'll put it on Facebook. And we'll reach out to downtown businesses with any, any, any method that we have of communication.
Thank you.
I would like to discuss the number two, does the business have employees other than owners? Without knowing as many details, I, I will put my neck out there that I can think of at least two. Well, I can think of two businesses that I support that appear to be owner operators that I think would be worthy and deserving of, of some financial support. They still have rent, mortgage. Some of the, the funding and the opportunities through the federal government and the SBA aren't eligible, or they aren't eligible because they don't have employees. So in, in the two that I'm thinking of are running with ease in SaaS where the owners are in there constantly. So I can only, and I don't see other employees. And so if, if they have an opportunity for some funding now, I would like to make sure that they're included and eligible. And I could be totally wrong on, on whether or not they have employees, which would make them eligible or not. But I would hate to exclude those two because those are two businesses I depend on. So if, if we can eliminate that as a criteria or as a disqualifier, I, I would like to have discussion or consideration on that.
So Greg, when you read the state criteria, one of them is that the business has 25 employees or less. Are we reading that, that they're required to have some employee other than the owner? Or do we think that the owner could qualify? And then I further out to Greg or Chris, I know both of you are, are listening and have both looked into this pretty deeply.
My understanding is that it, that's, that's to make sure it's a small business. That doesn't mean to imply that they must have employees.
Okay. That's what I thought too.
Yeah, I concur. No employees are required. Owner operators would technically be eligible.
So if, if the commission wanted to, we could eliminate from the resolution number two as a requirement. As Greg said earlier, this is really up to us how we, how we set this up. We think we should have some level of questionnaire just because it'll strengthen our application. But we could certainly eliminate that from the criteria as well as others or amend them in any way you see fit. Yeah, definitely an option. However, you want to proceed today, we, we can make it work.
I would agree to eliminate number two.
Yeah. I support that also.
I, Greg, I have a question. A number three, is your business open to the public on a regular basis? I guess I just want to know what your thinking was on that.
I, in general, you know, as you try to encourage businesses downtown and going to larger issues of how downtown is resolved. You want the, that vitality. You don't, you know, in, in planning world, you don't want like storefront offices though. That's a waste downtown. The purpose of this is to have a vibrant, you know, business that's promoting a vibrant downtown, it's open on a daily basis, regular basis, most days a week, so that you have that downtown activity. You know, it's sort of an appropriate downtown business.
It also factors back to the COVID response angle of this. I mean, this is really a COVID relief program that they're pitching. Businesses that are open to the public have not been able to be open to the public in, in most circumstances. And so there's a, there's an aspect there that would be helpful.
Do we have any more questions, discussion items?
I'm very glad there's this opportunity because there, man, we need to keep some of those small ones going. They're on a thread.
Right.
This is going to be a competitive program. There's only a million dollars made available statewide with a max of 50,000. statewide with a max of 50,000 per applicant. And so we'll do our best to get funded. We'll put our best foot forward, but I do want to stress that it's competitive and funding is not assured. We'll do the best we can to, to get it, but they're going to make some decisions on who's eligible. And so if the commission is agreeable to the resolution, you would need to make an amendment to strike question two from the local criteria before voting. And then if you're comfortable with the rest, the rest can stay as it's currently proposed.
So should I read the resolution and say with a, with an amendment to the criteria?
I think that you could, I think someone would need to make a motion to amend the resolution to strike question two. And then the rest of the resolution as presented, I think would be able to be acted upon after that motion was voted. And Robin, correct me if there's another way you'd like them to do this, but I don't know that she needs to read the whole resolution as long as a clearer motion is made to amend that certain section. Is that correct?
Yeah, I agree. All she needs to do is read it and just say the amendment, we're going to amend the resolution.
I make a motion to amend the resolution to eliminate criteria question number two and to approve the resolution, the balance of the resolution as presented.
More?
Okay, so this is Resolution R 20-088 from Community Development. It is a resolution to authorize the submission of an application for the MEDC Match on Main grant with the amendment to strike number two in the criteria for eligibility for businesses. Is that okay?
Robin, do we need a roll call on the amendment?
Should I put that first though?
Yeah.
Um, I, you don't need a roll call specifically on the amendment, Nathan. Commissioner Watson did a great job of putting that motion together. You can take one roll call on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
So are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? So I have a motion from Commissioner Watson. Robin, I do not know who did the second because I can't see. Thank you. And a second from Commissioner Halt to adopt the resolution with the amendment of striking criteria number two. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Halt?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution with the amendment to strike number two in the criteria and leave the rest of the resolution as is, is it, is approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Now it is public comment time. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. I'm not hearing any public comments, so we will move on. Are there any commissioner comments?
I have a quick one, for what it's worth. I kind of like these morning meetings. They're, they're kind of all right. I feel a little bit sharper. You know, I haven't been through a long days of work and then rolling to another meeting and this is all right.
Thank you all for accommodating us this morning.
I have a quick comment. The City Commission, I'm not interested in the interim job. I'm very busy. So I know I'd be great for that role, but uh, so if anybody has any ideas, I'm just kind of putting that out there that I'm not interested in.
We appreciate that.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Well, thank you everyone for joining today. I know that Commissioner Roberts has to get to another meeting for her job. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support, since my Zoom meeting is waiting since I'm the presenter, so.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.